It's a loud concern of our community that we don't have a Parks and Recreation Department. That there are things that have been let go for periods of time because we couldn't afford to replace something in the, in the park. So I, I want us to have vibrant parks that are used by, across the board, for people in Trinidad. There's public safety issues in our parks that we have unhoused people who gather every day in one of the parks downtown. Because that's where they're, they receive some food from a local ministry. That we do have a homeless coalition group that Steve is part of. And the police department, the lead detective there is part of it, and it's making some good strides. We haven't talked about homelessness at all, but that's also a large complaint.
Maybe under good guidance.
Yeah.
So, so under quality of life, right?
Just like big parks.
So you could say something along the line, and I've heard it in the community meetings, I've heard it from every one of you, right? Parks are important. And councilmember, you were talking to me, you know, this morning about, you know, parks are important.
Green spaces, parks, yes, for sure.
So one, one of the things you could do is you could write sort of a, a goal that has both a strategy and a result in it, right? Is that you could say, through the creation of a Parks and Recreation Department, if that's where you want to go. Our parks will be safe and well maintained as evidenced by. And then you could, you could, you know, measure that, safety of parks, you can measure, and you can also measure how well maintained they are. And some of them are not, as you know.
And I would call it Parks and Open Spaces, just so it's inclusive of like the Riverwalk and Trails and all, all of the things we have as outdoor amenities.
But no, are you talking about changing the name of the parks, Parks and Recreation? What she's writing?
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying when we say parks, I, I want that to include in the discussion, all the open spaces.
So it still would be a Parks and Recreation.
Through the creation of the department, your, your Parks, Open Spaces and.
Yeah.
Parks and Open Spaces.
Well, and Recreation.
And Recreation, Facilities, will be well maintained, will be safe and well maintained.
So the, um, the department's already contemplated in our municipal code. It's an established department, and it's called the Department of Parks, Recreation and Boulevards.
Okay.
But I think as we move towards creating this department, we should probably update the ordinance to capture what it is that we want. And we can call it whatever.
Open Spaces.
Ah, gotcha.
And.
I was just being fine.
That's fine, you're fine. And Recreation, Facilities, will be safe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
Perfect.
Okay. So we can leave it at that, and you can figure out the measures when we work on the implementation plan, if you want to do that.
I think that'd be good.
Okay. So councilmembers, what do you think?
How's it measured, safe and well maintained, how's that measured?
We'll figure that out. We can, we can do the, the measurement in the implementation plan if you want to.
Okay. And then in this category of options, there's a strong desire in the city for an aqua, what's it called?
Aquatic Center.
Aquatic Center, yeah.
Aquatic Center.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
You ever heard that, Marv?
I've heard it so many times, I'm trying to echo you.
Exactly.
So I think if we don't have something about that, or if we don't commit to doing something about that in this strategic plan, it will be very alienating.
Yeah.
No doubt. Why is there such an interest in an aquatic center in Trinidad, Colorado?
It's a good question.
Because there's, there's a group of people that are very focused on that.
Why?
Because there's an aquatic center in there, and they go to that center every morning to exercise.
They drive, and they drive their kids down there, too.
Right.
They went to Roma.
Right. We have an outdoor pool.
Yes.
Here, but it's, yeah, right, but it's seasonal, obviously.
Right.
And they want year-round swimming.
Is there, I mean, I'm kind of curious, right?
Yeah.
Is, are there competitive swimmers here? Does the high school have a swim team?
Not yet, so if we've got a competitive swimming pool, there's the college and there's, there's a tide.
Does the college have a pool?
No, that's what I'm saying, it would, it, it, it would work.
Well, we used to have one, what was it, the junior high and?
Well, at the Prospect Plaza.
Prospect Plaza has an Olympic.
It's still there.
I didn't know.
Wow.
We had lap swimmers, we had competition, we had diving in the schools.
They actually had a swimming team in the fifties and sixties. Oh, that's interesting.
I know we do.
Mayor, yeah.
So one of the people, one of the families that are very vocal about aquatic, an aquatic center. Go up to Denver, they have a second home in Denver, and they go to, I believe it's the Aurora Aquatic Center.
Yeah, there's several in Aurora, but yeah.
Yeah, but they're.
With the four hockey rinks and the Aurora Aquatic Center, four hockey rinks and a massive pool.
Right, right, right. So these people took a video of how beautiful this aquatic center was. So I'm looking at this video, I said, okay, there's four people in the pool. The whole aquatic center, there's four people.
Yeah.
In the pool, in the middle of Aurora, which has a population, I'd say at least fifty times higher.
It's almost a million, yeah.
Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand is their latest population in Aurora, it's something.
Four hundred thousand.
So it's like.
But in Aurora, there's a lot of competition for pools, there's not just that one.
No, but what I'm saying, I'm saying is how peaceful is that to us?
Well, and that's the way, when, when I looked at the recreational center and security in Whitefield and, what's another, Cessarog. They have a small aquatic center, they have the rock climbing walls, they have the pickleball courts built in, they have basketball courts. They have all of this in one. And I think we could have it from something like.
We could. I, I think it would have a transformative effect on this community to have. I know we're sitting here in a rec center, but it's, it's ill-used and it's, it's old. And we have a few pickleball courts that we fashioned out of the, the basketball courts. But if we had something that was a twenty-first century kind of facility that addresses those, the needs of twenty-first century people. I think people would use it, kids would use it, so it would address issues with youth not having something to do. It would increase, I think, the benefit, it would benefit our school district because they could start a swim team.
Can I, can I use an experience that is very current right now? In Gunnison with the library, about what they did.
Oh, yeah.
They surveyed the community before they issued the bond, right, for the new library. They now have surveyed, I think I mentioned to you, they're looking at another library in the north end of the valley. They surveyed the community and asked them, would, would you want this and would you use it? Right? And what that does is give you tremendous confidence in trying to raise the money.
That's true.
Right? So kind of a step by step, right? So you need, you need money for a survey, you need money for a design process. They got a dollar grant for a million dollars for the design. Okay? So there's, there's money to do this, right? And I really encourage you to do the survey so that you're not building something that four people want.
Well, and Marv, I think one of, so a couple of thoughts. So first of all, I, I just want to point out aquatic centers are very expensive to construct. I would anticipate anywhere between fourteen and twenty million dollars. They also always operate at a deficit, so we would have to be prepared in the general fund to commit money to.
They don't pay for themselves.
There's no way they can. You wouldn't be able to charge, I mean, you'd have to charge everyone a hundred dollars a use. Because you think about the pool chemicals, the staff, the boilers just to heat the pool water, all of that. It really adds up. So I just want to point that out, if we move forward on aquatic centers, not just funding the construction, we're going to have to be prepared to budget for its operations. Los Ninos Park is something staff has been eyeing, so eventually we may need a new city hall in ten, twenty years down the road. So we feel like Los Ninos might be a great location to have a government center, which might include a new community center with an aquatic center. Plus a new city hall, some outdoor space, it's right by the river. So I want to point that out, and in the meantime, one of the things I've been thinking about is, why don't we offer, we have our new tourism van. Why don't we hire a driver to three, four times a week, drive people to Raton, to swim in their pool and then drive them back?
I, I think that would be a very.
It's a meantime idea.
A meantime, but it doesn't increase quality of life here, per se.
Yeah. I just wanted to add those things in, in the context of the discussion, but certainly the strategic plan would be a good place to put. If that's what we want to commit to moving forward with building some semblance of an aquatic center, we should have that in here.
The other aspect, if I could, of doing a survey, is you find out what people really want, right? It may be a community recreation center that has a climbing wall, that has meeting rooms, that has a gym. So that you can begin to design it to what your community wants and. You know, I, I know, I heard, why don't we have an aquatic center? Well, you voted it down for one thing.
Well, what was the results of that survey?
We did not vote it down.
Aquatic Center.
Yeah.
Oh, it wasn't.
This is where I get very, um, re-clamped up this system.
I love that word.
Yeah.
Are you the church lady?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Some less than it is the word compelling.
Nice, that's good, that's good. Corvette.
This is what clicks me as for public service in an elected office, as I do. I understand what you want. I would love to give that to you, but it's against my better judgment, for the good of the overall community. To promise you something that, in my experience, in the long run, would be detrimental to the entire community.
Well, there it is. I mean, one of the things you could do, all right, this, this is, I really encourage a process. Survey, Sarah. I really encourage you to stake out a goal that says that you will, you will survey the community regarding the community's recreation needs. Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a cut and paste idea about this, as far as other communities having aquatic centers? Can we just look at other communities and be like, oh, yeah, let's not?
I, I, I think what else we would want to survey is their willingness to bear the cost of maintaining it through tax and bonding.
Yeah.
So.
You know, it, it may be an aquatic center, it may not be an aquatic center.
Right.
It may be another kind of recreation venue that includes the city hall. I mean, there are, I really like what you said, Steve, because rather than going after one thing that some people want, right? Be strategic about it, right?
Yeah, we can look at other municipalities, maybe like, you know, they tried it, it didn't work, or, or they knocked it out of the park.
They did it and it's amazing.
It's amazing.
In an amazing way.
We, we always are saying, you know, what are we, what are we asking people to come here for?
Yeah.
In Trinidad, and I think a really well-done recreation center would be a thing that I, would be a ready thing. We have a great recreation center, we have programs for kids, we have.
Right.
That would be a thing that we would clearly be able to tout as a reason to come here, not only as, to live here, but as a visitor. You know, to make it available to guests.
While you're here.
Yeah.
So Durango has a really nice one. Salida has a nice one that's built off their hot springs, right? So there are examples around, to your point, councilmember. I, I would say go slow.
And be smart about it.
And be smart about it.
Yeah.
If you find that there, and, and I agree with you completely about your approach. And would recommend your approach is ask them what they want in terms of recreation facilities. And to, and will they, are they willing to increase taxes to pay for it? Because if either one of those things is not true, don't go there.
Right. Like in, when I lived in Tucson, they had a, I think there was some kind of a, I don't know if we do in our property tax, have some kind of parks support. Or, I mean, you pay for a percentage of your taxes in that city go to waste management. But it seems like it, it would be very logical to say, we'll make it part of the property taxes, we'll make it just so that it's, it's already committed to be done.
Do you get any property tax?
And we get a small portion of it, but if we were to bond something out, that would be in the levy.
You could tie a levy to that.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a fair and equitable way just to collect taxes. Because it's not across the board for everybody. It's just property owners that'll bear the rent of that. You have to have a tax that is all-inclusive for everybody.
You could do a little bit of property, a little bit of sales, a little bit of.
Lodging tax.
It's complicated.
What about, in my mind, this is something, if we're going to go big on a community center. This seems like a great opportunity to really partner with the county.
I was going to say the same thing.
The school district, maybe the college, maybe COC. Let's, let's get all the players in to help.
We're adding school programs right now.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And location, location, location.
Absolutely.
The county does utilize all our services here.
It's true.
Because there's nothing in the county gets all here.
So I, I, you know, I really want to encourage you to continue to think like you are. Think kind of holistically about it. What is it the community would want? Would they be willing to, to pay for it? And then who are your partners to help you create it, right?
And I like what we're writing up here, so what we're doing in the strategic plan isn't saying by 2027, we're going to build an aquatic center. We're saying, we're going to explore basically the feasibility of expanding our recreational opportunities.
Yeah. And, and who knows, right? You may end up being pickleballs here and, and meeting space and wherever here and, you know. Who knows, right? But I think your, your heart is saying, let's, let's do more. Let's do more for our community in terms of parks and recreation. You're creating a department which, that will, that will give you the ability to plan and program, right? Which you don't really have right now.
Yeah.
You're mowing lawns, that's not parks.
Exactly.
Correct. That's the point.
It's one program within a parks department.
Yeah, thank you, I agree.
So, you know, awesome. Mayor, you okay with this kind of approach to ask the community?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the caveat will be, are you willing to pay for it?
Yeah.
Yep, two questions, right?
And, and I think if they're not, then I would not build it.
Right.
I mean, because part of the buy-in that you want, and the reason that they will use it is because we're paying for it. You know, if you're paying for something, you go use it, you don't just go, well, somebody nice did that for us, so.
You're right.
Yeah, there may be, there may be wonderful grants for, for, for planning, for designing it, for building it.
Yeah.
But, boy, the long-term is that the community has to pay for it.
But it addresses everything else, and that's why I think it is so critical.
Yeah, because it hits the youth, it hits the seniors, it hits all the way across the board.
Absolutely.
And then those community, those community rooms are awesome, you know, those are always being used. Ours is used here quite a bit, you know, and like I said, this is a great facility, but we've outgrown it.
Well, and there's two aspects to this facility. There's the actual facility and the people involved in the programs. So I think the facility is probably adequate, maybe. But do we have the programs in place to be utilized, the facility?
No.
Efficiently?
Yeah. Well, and we used to, I think we don't have enough staff, right, for the town to utilize the T-ball, the softball.
Right.
We used to have co-ed softball, we had the baseball at Central Park for the community, soccer was big.
Kickball.
Kickball.
There were a lot of programs. Those things are, I mean, someone in your staff, you know, said that, that Little League baseball lasts for a month in the summer.
Yeah, and the kids are being bussed to, they all carpool up to Colorado City to play Little League.
So I'm not used to, you know, the city doing all of the intramurals and the youth sports. Usually it's private entities that form associations, and the city's role is to provide, you know.
Maybe the field, yeah.
Exactly. So I, I do, I, I just want to point out, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, but it is abnormal in my mind that the city would be hosting leagues.
But they're not happening.
There'd be Parks and Recs.
I think it's really common in small towns in Colorado.
Yeah, maybe that's true.
And I think some of that is not only because they're very involved in ours.
Yeah.
When you have associations, there's rules at state levels like Colorado Soccer Association, right? They get to decide whether or not you can have a club in your community.
Oh, okay, so it's.
And so the Parks and Recs departments usually keep it at a very recreational level and not highly competitive. And that's when, and then middle school or high school ages, when people want to get more competitive and then travel all over. When you enter the Colorado Soccer League, you're traveling all over.
Oh, I bet.
You're in a little bit of a different, you have this I-25 corridor, but for us.
Yeah.
So just, that may be why, you know, Parks and Rec for young kids, I think there's been roles in municipalities for that in small towns.
Thank you for that, because, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
Just, but I guess another question I would have is, how confident are we, are we that we have the volume of youth that would participate in these programs?
Tom Murphy texted me and he said, all this was the discussion when we had a YMCA twenty-four years ago. And, you know, he went, he personally in debt on that and like guaranteed a loan personally.
Wow.
And wound up having to pay it off. But anyway, that's, that, it just wasn't supported.
Yeah.
My population at that time was only five thousand.
Meeting room at the Wellcome Center, I remember.
Oh, wow.
We're looking at the population now, and there's, and our, and our youth is underserved.
No, great.
And in our schools, we see it at our school districts, after-school programs are becoming very, very non-existent. And it's a lot, a lot of the kids are online, you know, and I think if we had stuff for them to be able to participate in.
Well, it's interesting, nobody in this room has kids in the community. So how do we ask the question to the youth themselves and say, what do you want us to do?
So you have to ask them.
Exactly.
What, what might be, what, you know, there, who knows where this will go, right? It's really interesting. We have, you know, a small branch in the University of Colorado, you know, Western Colorado University in Gunnison. And they use state money to build an absolutely, you know, I don't know the word, but wonderful, you know, field house. Or, or a track and there's workout facilities and the member, the community can buy memberships. It's, I mean, that, the community didn't have to do that. And who knows what will happen in conversations with the college, you know, right? I mean, it's just, I mean, I think what you're doing is you're setting in motion a pursuit.
Yeah.
Of some ideas and some ways to enhance recreation opportunities in the town and the city, and I think that's great.
How cool would it be if we had some of our superstar college athletes mentor kids in sports? I, I think that would be such a great partnership. Plus it probably gets the college students some leadership experience and looks good for them.
Check.
And the kids get to like, you know, have these heroes.
Coach some, let the college players do some coaching of some, you know, some talented kids or something.
And, and, you know, you're right. I, I would love to see a Trinidad, including myself, where you drive through the neighborhoods and people have, you know, a TC. A Trinidad State College flag in their front yard.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Supporting the teams, like a lot of college towns, you go to, like where I went to grad school, KU, you'll see a J.O.C. flag in every yard. People are just very proud, they go to the games, they, they go experience that.
I, I agree with you, I think to be the old lady.
No, be the old.
But I am, you know, so my, my family's involved in a lot of aspects of this community.
Yeah.
So my daughter is on the foundation, the board of, yeah, the foundation of the college.
Yeah.
And they're upset because they can't even get a booster club in the college.
Wow.
So how are we gonna?
Yeah, how do you?
How do we facilitate them?
Yeah. And I don't know, maybe that's not our role, it's just an interesting thing to me, it's an observation.
It is interesting.
We need to rebuild community pride, and somehow, some way, we need to foster that.
It's a trade.
Some of the things that we have there, a lot of these, all these she's, are going to do that.
Yeah.
You know, when they start seeing their communities beautifying, when they start seeing that we're working, they're like, because if that was one thing I learned years and years ago. If you work alongside your employees, you are the example, and they work just as hard as you do. But when we sit back and we just let it decay, they allow it to decay.
Yeah.
You know, so if we look at it that direction, that we're beautifying, they say, oh, they're doing it. And one of the great things about this town I love is that if you paint your fence, your neighbor will paint their fence. Because they're like, my color's better than theirs. So once we start, I think once we start that ball rolling, I think we'll start seeing a difference in that pride coming back to Trinidad. Because growing up, growing up here, we had the flags, we had the signs.
I was going to say.
They were in everyone's yard, if you had a minor football player, you had a TC football player, you had somebody from Merrill. They had their stuff in their yards, and now it's just, they had to reset the colors.
But aren't we trying to change society?
Amen. Amen.
I think that's part of our goal.
That's what we're trying to do. That's exactly what we're trying to do through this, is change the society.
Culture.
Well, not change, just bring it back, you're not even, not even changing it.
I mean, change it in a good direction.
You're just bringing it back to, to whatever.
We're the leaders.
We have the ability and the tools to do that.
We're the leaders, we set the tone. If we're not apathetic, if we care about this and we're out there talking with people, they'll get the vision. It was here before, I don't know what happened to it, but it can come back.
I think it's burned out.
Well, then maybe those people need to go on.
Burn out, burn out.
Western and Gunnison could use some improvements, but when I took my son to Logan, Utah State. All of the street signs, the city street signs had a banner. Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my God, USU, yes, USU and their banners and their logos. And town, the town was saying, welcome families.
Yeah.
Welcome back fresh, or welcome to Logan freshman parents.
College town.
The town was so excited that their students were coming back. And let me tell you what, we went into town and we had dinner, and we shopped in their town for his dorm room. And it felt really good as a parent dropping my son off in a place that was embracing my child.
Yeah.
And Montana State does the same thing, and they have a parade and they, you know, it's not that they're always advertising the school, but, you know, the first week of school, when parents are dropping kids off. And maybe some other homecoming weeks or whatever. The town embraces the school, and it's little, it's not like they're, I don't know what their agreements are, but it's just a banner.
It's cheap.
That's cheap goodwill. And your, your, your light posts can have a banner, and it may not cost that much.
You can do that.
But it's all about that welcoming feeling, you want to draw people into town and spend money in your businesses.
Well, and.
That week is big.
We were talking yesterday about how the college kids don't come down to.
Right, this would be weird.
You want to invite the college?
We can do, right?
It's weird, because we have the stuff, and it's like, nobody's against the college, it's just that they don't hang out at the local pubs and pizza parlors and the. And I don't, I don't know why they're not coming, because nobody's saying, you know, like those.
Yeah, maybe to Darcy's point, though, maybe if we work harder to make them feel more welcome.
Right.
That might change their attitude. You didn't, I, I don't know for sure.
Well, you don't go where you don't feel welcome, right?
Well, they may have orientation. Maybe we as the city should be.
Do something big.
Make an appearance.
Give tickets away to gangs and.
Like we have our laser projectors now, we could do a homecoming or a parent's weekend light show specific for the college.
Let the freshmen have a town and let them run wild, like, can't be scared of kids being kids, you got to love them, have it.
Well, we should be doing parades when one of the teams wins a championship.
Right, exactly.
Really celebrating that.
We did that prior.
We did last year, that's right, so, that's right.
Well, this, this kind of opens up to another thing I want to talk about is education.
Oh, yeah.
And quality of life in Trinidad is vastly harmed by the lack of quality education. Vastly harmed. And I think some of the things that we're talking about in terms of increasing the visibility of TSD, Trinidad State. So maybe we have some kind of. the visibility of T S D, Trinidad State, so maybe we have some kind of notification, school is starting this week.
Right.
You know, the kids are doing this, just so they know we're aware of what they're doing, we have lo, uh, very little other ways to impact what they do, but if they know that we're watching, maybe that will help.
Well, what, I mean, you can, you can specifically write a, a result about creating a vibrant relationship with, um, the school.
Right.
T S, is it T S U?
T S D.
T U.
It's a college town.
And ironically, it is the very first school district in the state of Colorado, so it's called T S D number one.
Mm-hmm.
Hi. No, that's the public school.
Yeah, that's.
Trinidad High School.
That state, I, I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, T S D, Trinidad School District.
School district, that's what I'm saying.
So, so are we talking, cause we've been talking about two things, right, we've been talking about the, the, the junior college, and we've been talking about the school. I recommend that you keep them separate in this regard, you know, um, I think what you're talking about is creating, uh, you know, a vibrant relationship between, um, the town and, um, the.
The school district.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the.
College.
The college? I, I agree, I think both are necessary.
Right, but they're very different, this relationship is very different.
Yeah.
Right? Um, helping, you know, the college, creating, this is a college town, say that, you can say, you know, we wanna, you know, we want Trinidad to become a college town.
We should.
You know, in our relationship with, uh, what is it, Trinidad State?
College.
College. And they are four-year university now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would it be creating a vibrant relationship with the T S D and a supportive relationship with Trinidad School District?
I don't wanna keep them separate.
That's right, I mean, so like, like, but that type of relationship with them would be considered supportive.
Right.
Versus as active as we can with each other.
Right, so let's, let's take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Very different circumstances, right? Um, create a vibrant relationship with T S C, um, so, you know, you wanna say, so that Trinidad becomes a college town?
Yeah.
Love it.
All right, let's do it.
Love it, there's so many things we can do under this and it's exciting, right? Meet the players.
Awesome.
Have them down to space to create for our reception, so the community can see our basketball players.
Yeah, great idea.
So you gotta get less than ten dollars, they give out all kind of perks.
Right.
That's two eyes.
And when they come meet the players, they all get a yard flag that they can.
Right on, it's a great idea, but you know, what about also like discounts for, for college kids?
Like Trinity.
In restaurants, we don't, you could get the minors card for discounts, right, but, but discounts for college kids in restaurants, even if the city has to, you know, do a subsidy.
So this, let me ask a question next, on our, we have boards and commissions for city departments. Would, would it be?
You say create another board.
That's right.
Have a, have a position, somebody on the council.
Yeah.
To go to, uh, Dr. Effler, who's the president of the college.
Yeah.
And say, we want to actively start supporting the college.
Like an education liaison?
Yes.
Why not?
I'm on the advisory council.
Yeah, you're the, I nominate you.
You have enough to do that.
I saw that as chairman of council, right?
Well, kid, very busy.
You know, I went to one basketball game last year and their coach came up and thanked me.
Yeah.
Wow.
And, and the coach's parents thanked me, but they also told me if we lose, we don't ever want you back.
You gotta be a good luck, you gotta be a good luck.
Thank god they won.
That's, that's an interesting point to me, um, people talk a lot about there's nothing to do, there's nothing for kids. We have all these sports games happening throughout the year, why, why not take your kids to those things?
Why not?
I mean, that, you may not like it, but your kids are very well paid, and then they'll be off their computers for a little while.
There were a lot of, I, the base, basketball games that I went to at the colleges, there were a lot of Trinidad kids there.
Good, good.
The Trinidans bring a huge, huge turnout of all those kids.
Good.
But the college kids support each other too, that was really nice to see.
What sports does the, does the college have?
Uh, volleyball, baseball, basketball.
Track.
Track. They give out scholarships for women's volleyball, they're one, they're one of the top teams in their league. Their men's basketball won the championship last year in their league, in their division. Yeah, I mean, they're, these people, some of them do go on and play professionally.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, you named four big sports.
Yeah, and there's others too, I think, but those are the four big ones.
Volleyball, basketball. Here's a cheesy idea, I'll probably, it's just something to talk to mayor. What if we got a Trojan helmet for the top of the Simpson dress, what do you think? No, like, cause when you turn on the light, it's.
Yeah, you need the big gorilla, we need the big gorilla to pull over to like your town, you know?
A four-story Trojan gorilla.
It's like, we're supporting you at that level.
Right, yeah.
We don't wear Halbertson basketball.
I'm talking about a shield.
Cause in the shield, I can't remember if you have a Trojan helmet or a shield.
Do you want to add one for the service thing?
So, just start a conversation, will you, about, you made a very heartfelt comment about the schools, K through twelve.
I, it's the heart of a city, if you don't have a vibrant school district, a robust, um, if the kids in your town are not going to the school district in your town, you're losing all the relationships that are built that way.
That's true.
I know this because my kids, they're my, our major, as adults, our major friendships were formed through our children, going to their events, going to, if you don't have that basic glue in a city, then it's very disjointed, we have kids that are out at Hone, we have kids at Primero, we have kids, where's another place?
Gold Academy.
Gold, so we don't have, like, there's no, the reason there aren't flags is because there are, there's not a, a heart beating in that school.
We need the, we need the, the huge alumni event.
Yeah.
With the alumni and the homecoming and people flying in and saying, hey, I went to Trinidad nineteen so-and-so.
Going out to the football.
And I'm going, and I'm eighty years old, and I went to Trinidad, we need that energy. Kind of what John Sanders did, what, what is that up there?
C U.
C U.
Yeah, I mean, not that, but something along those lines where people like, oh, I'm, I'm coming to Trinidad and I'm staying at the so-and-so and we're drinking and a party and, and the school is amazing and the campus and the town, you know, we need that energy, so.
One thing I think we need to do, agreed, is also focus on some of the positive things that happen. I, I think in general, we always talk, oh, the school district is.
Right.
A mess.
Keep it positive.
Blah, 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 but then we had, the mayor and I went to Eddie Bowman's, um, ceremony. So Eddie Bowman is a senior at Trinidad High School, he's basically the best wrestler in Colorado state history.
Really?
Yeah, he's won three championships, I think, in a row.
What's his name?
Eddie Bowman, and, I mean, he's, I'm sure he's gonna go into college and likely the pros, but he's, he's amazing, and that's a huge win for our community, we did do a very nice ceremony for that, but, you know, how, what about a banner downtown that says, home of Eddie Bowman?
Right, that hometown love, right, that love, where I'm proud to be in Trinidad and stuff.
Things like that.
I agree, I think that, if you want something to improve, you have to look on it with love, you can't look on it entirely with criticism, but love part of it is, this needs to improve, but you have to value it, and you have to tell it, we're looking forward to the growth that you're having and that you're going to have.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's just defeating, I, I don't know a lot, honestly, about the school district, other than what families tell me, people in the community tell me, and it's all negative. And that's gotta be incredibly depressing to the people who teach there and administer there.
But, I'm, I'm trying to be realistic about this. Because if you listen to what people are saying about us.
That's true.
It's very negative too.
That's true.
You know, it's their perception, and so if we're having a hard time trying to improve our perception of ourselves, what success are we gonna have trying to improve the perception of the school district?
Aren't we just purely articulating that it's a goal of ours to have a relationship with them?
It, it is.
You have to start something, right?
That, that's the beginning.
I think that supportive role, and everybody's ideas are fantastic, and it's like to go through, like you said, the banner.
Yeah.
Put that up, we can do that, that's something that wouldn't harm us, you know, and it's not gonna.
I understand.
Parade wouldn't harm.
Those little things, I think, make a difference for the other kids, they'll be like, they'll strive for that goal, because they're like, one day.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna be on a banner.
I wanna be on that banner like, like him.
Right, I got the town this weekend, I got a key to the city.
So we have to differentiate, is it our school only, or is society changing? Is post-COVID changed the complexion of education in this country, not this community, and?
Only if you let it.
Pardon?
Only if you let it.
Yeah, and it's not because of COVID that people don't send their children there.
That's not, that's not it.
That's not it.
The leakage rate to these other schools is very high.
Right, I think Aaron's point is that, that Trinidad, the, the public school is suffering vitally. And the product, I mean, the, the number of kids that have left and gone, and we know historically the horrible superintendent that was there, right, now that caused teachers to leave, students to leave. But anyway, that, that's what needs support, and, and the city may be recognizing it, trying to promote it, I mean, if I'm hearing you correctly, and just beginning to like, try to promote them and, and what the school is, and banners, I, you know, and, and for the football team. It's, the football players have to play both ways, offense and defense, cause we now have so few football players, right, isn't that?
I think that's completely true.
And we historically had state champion football teams, and we, we have a great, but, but kind of, you know, thinking about it positively, talking about it positively, and even though we don't fund the school district, just trying to promote what goes on.
And I'll give you an example that's near and dear to my heart, and this, you know, is just, just something to, to put into context of where maybe we could do something. I would love the city to provide space and sponsor a community band, um, which would be free to us, but the high school lost their band program.
Yeah.
So there's probably kids who wanna play instruments but don't have a venue or an opportunity. That's where we could say, hey, we really wanna target youth, and then maybe mix in some adults who can give them some teaching.
I would stay in Trinidad's.
Yeah, exactly, and then have, have that group perform at Fourth of July, you know, and really just say, we're trying to bring the, the youth into our world too, to make up for some gaps that the school district's not doing, um, and start building those relationships.
Even little things like that would make a difference to people who come here and they go, oh, this fam, this, this community values its kids. This community has children, and they value the ones that they have.
Aging populations want youth around them.
That's true, that's very true.
So if you wanna attract.
I don't.
If, if you wanna have a, a place that you attract and maintain and keep an aging population, I forget the word to use, you need to have kids too.
One, one thing I have to remember back to the, the kids, Goal Academy, their students all utilize the majority of District One for sports, for sports, for band, and all that, that is, because Goal doesn't offer that.
Yeah.
So they actually go into the school districts to use that.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we can't forget that they're actually part of it, even though they're on an online education school.
That's a good point.
All their recreation and everything goes through District One.
Good.
And that's, if we keep encouraging that, maybe they'll wanna pack to school, into the brick and mortar, because they're having a great time.
Well, let's, let's think about, uh, kind of a, it's, it's not so much measurable, but kind of a, a soft goal that sounds like what you're doing, is that the city will create, I'm just thinking about that, right, will proactively develop a, um, a relationship with the school system.
Yes.
To improve, um.
Relationship.
Yeah, to, to improve, you know, life and education for our children, or something like that, right? So that could spin into the band idea.
Yeah.
And I, I, I know that that's not the right words that you wanna necessarily use, but something like that, that, that signals to the school and to the community, you're gonna actually lean into this. You're actually gonna think about things like your, your idea, council member, about alumni, right? Just things to say, hey, we can help you with that.
Yeah.
Without necessarily, you're not gonna fund the school, we know that, they know that, but there are other things that you are, you know, you are a very powerful organization.
That's true.
The other thing I really like about this is one of the things that I hear, I heard yesterday a lot, was that people don't understand we aren't in the school district, we can't control it.
Yeah.
You have a goal like this, it's clearly undefined, that you are separate from the school district.
Yeah.
But you wanna see a change too, and you're sending a message to the school district, um, I don't know who sits on your school board, but you know, you can influence that, there's a lot of things here that send messages to your community that clarifies your role.
And it's, it's a trouble, it's, the school system is in trouble, I mean, you hear it in every meeting, in almost every conversation, um, in the community meetings, it was just.
And, and you said the staff too had a lot of negative comments, which, you know, if city council takes a kind of leadership expression of this is a support, that, that benefits our staff, they're like, oh, city council gets something that's of primary importance to me.
That's true, one, I think we have this, I have this conversation with you, as a matter of fact, about our boards, once we start leading by example, maybe our boards will also follow. Like, we were talking about the arts and culture, you know, arts and creative district, you know, they have the power to do school drives for art supplies and the arts program. We have, uh, they can even do stuff for even the music program and say, hey, you know, we can run this little fundraiser for you and see if we can get the fruits. You know, or something to kind of just help them out, and, and that shows that, active that we care, we wanna foster that, that, that child to grow up to be something. Not just leaving them to the wayside.
You know, the, one of the things that's happening in this room, is you're saying you're not willing to give up on the school system.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people here too.
Yeah, it's true.
A lot of people, a lot of parents, I'm not, I'm not doing it, I'm gonna take my kids twenty miles away or whatever, but you as a city are saying, we're not gonna give up on this, we're, we're gonna help these, this school system recover its, you know, its vibe, its, its ability. You know, and, and there may be times when, you know, if there's money at stake at the state level, you can help advocate for that.
Right.
Right?
That's true.
Sure.
I mean, once you start this, right, once you start proactively trying to have us, you know, mutually, not mutually, but a supportive relationship, doesn't mean you're gonna fund the school, you're not gonna do that, but there may be a whole variety of, you know, soft-serve kinds of things that you can help promote, that brings the school back, I mean, this thing's on the brink.
Some cities do, um, and I really like this, is what's called a youth city, a youth city council, and so.
Youth city council, right.
Yeah, so they'll have from the school district, high school students, I think, yeah, usually juniors and seniors, and they basically get elected by their classmates to serve on a youth city council, and then they would come to the council chambers, meet once a month, and discuss issues that pertain to youth in our community, and then you all would get the benefit of that discussion and their perspective. So that would be an example of something we could do to be supportive.
During the last election, the college, I think it was the college that, um, asked some of the high school kids to come over and help facilitate the debates.
Oh, good.
See, that's.
That really was. Awesome.
That's cool.
That was really good.
They generated the questions, and they read the questions.
Yes.
Civic engagement.
Yeah.
Well, and, and one thing that I've been amazed with, that I, I never knew the power of a letter of support in the city, what it can actually do.
Yeah.
And I was just like, I was just like, wow.
That's true.
And it costs us nothing to give that.
You know, and what you're saying is you're not gonna be silent about this, you know, and, and council member, what you said, to do this with love and, and not, you know, disparagement or, you know, harsh judgment, I'll tell you, there's a lot of that in the community. And you'd be setting a different sort of approach, a different culture, hey, you know, we need to support our school system.
What did you just say, we should have, I forgot.
The, about the letter of support?
No, no, no. What you said before.
The college students and high schoolers.
What was that?
Civic engagement.
Civic engagement, to promote civic engagement.
They kind of come in and go out.
You know.
Give a supply and a treat for you, so they're all civic engaged.
Sure. I, I call that.
It's, it's so difficult because we. we have a shrinking population base, right? And then the, if we were in a city, this would be urban flight, but the shrinking population base, people having their kids go to Honi, Primero, uh, the other one. So we have so few students going to Trinidad High School. And so that's what funding is based on, exactly. It's it is a a horrible death spiral. And like in Pueblo, there are so many schools that are just benefiting, like, increase in population, more funding. They're expanding their resources, they're they're just like getting bigger. And the funding for the school is just, it's contracting all the time.
We usually get eight thousand dollars per student.
What is it now? You know?
It's not even seven.
Wow.
Seven thousand per student.
You know.
The state, state, state allocated money.
You know, it's bad.
The October count, it depends on your October count.
Somebody that's in education pointed this out to me years ago. In Los Angeles County, we just, we have Aguilar, we have Primero, we have Honi, we have Trinidad, and then now we have online schools. There's five. In New Mexico, Cofax County has one.
Really?
Oh, I didn't realize that. There's not.
That makes.
There's probably some online options, but as far as brick and mortar, they just have.
What county is that, Mayor?
Cofax County.
Yeah, that's Wharton.
So we have five offices here.
Uh, maybe.
Cause I know Maxwell Springs.
Yeah, I think that's. There's numerous goal academies in Colorado.
Yeah.
They're all over the place now.
But just one school, one brick and mortar school in.
Interesting.
That's amazing, yeah.
And and is there most days, the money follows the kids, is that right?
Yeah.
So if you were kids, you have, there wasn't any yet.
Yeah.
Boy.
And anyone.
That's a real disadvantage for some places.
Yes.
Anyone who moves here with school-aged kids, they want their kids to go to Honi or Primero.
That's true.
Or someplace other than their high school kids.
Primero has the the ability to collect severance taxes.
Oh, yeah.
They have.
What taxes?
Severance.
Severance, yeah.
And, you know, they have a beautiful new facility. It's because that's where all the gas and oil and.
Right.
CMI, CMI land.
Honi has a waiting list, right? Historically, they had a waiting list.
They were thinking of even expanding and building on to the existing school. But they turn down students every year. You have to pretty much apply.
But, you know, we're getting into the weeds again. But Honi has the luxury of bedding their students.
Yeah, they do.
If they don't want you, they say, no, they're on a district.
That's right.
We don't want you. But Trinidad doesn't have that.
No. Well, there's one thing you could do too, is encourage better policy, right?
Yeah.
Or better, I mean, you guys, you know, coming from someplace else, you drive up to the school and you see those abandoned, you know, tennis courts, you know, out front.
Parking lot that's falling apart.
It's just so depressing.
It speaks volumes about the value that we place in education.
Oh, it's strange. You know, the football field is primal.
Yeah.
And it's cool, it's like, you know.
It's cause nobody plays on it.
But historically, Trinidad's won one game in the last six years. In fact, some of the sports club sponsors at radio station won't even want to commit, whatever, two hundred dollars for their advertisement.
During the games.
During the games.
Wow.
Cause somebody's watching, so no, nobody's even listening anymore hardly.
And you do it for prom and wrestling and and everything, but not football.
Well, I think this is a good goal. Let's uh, move on, cause I I wanted to talk about one more that I I wanted to ask you guys about putting into the strategic plan. So twenty twenty-six, again, is our hundred and fifty year anniversary. Do we wanna have any strategic goals about that celebration? Since that'll be right in the middle of our our implementation of the strategic plan.
Twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six, yeah.
What, what, where do we celebrate?
It's a hundred and fifty year anniversary of the incorporation of our town.
Eighteen seconds.
Yeah.
What's that called? What's a hundred and fifty called?
That's a good question.
Sesquicentennial.
Oh, there it is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, cause I went through one in the town that I grew up in.
Good job. That's why you always used to win the spelling bees, you knew those words. Yeah, jeez, killer.
I have the robots coming up, cause they, I was telling Aaron, they finished first competition. Up at uh, Sendings.
I forgot that's such a big deal.
And I have about seven of them coming up to the radio station on Friday.
That's exciting.
With their professor.
Are you gonna get to see the robots?
Yeah. They have one named Todd. Cause the smart robot, Todd, in parentheses.
Sort of in stance for something, yeah.
Yeah, everyone, but I'll find out.
Everyone, that's cool.
Steve, what would that, what would it look like?
Well, and that, that's what I'd like, you all did. I I just think it should be almost like a um, reinvention of our town. You know, we've we've been through a lot in the last hundred and fifty years, but what's coming next? What type of celebrations do we wanna have? Do we wanna have any big events? Do we wanna have monuments or art that's deployed to celebrate that? Those types of things. Do we want it to be an all-year-long thing? Do we want it just to be one week? Do we want people to come celebrate with us? Are there all of those things?
When I first moved here, this town was headed in that direction. Festivals.
Yeah, and festivals in general.
Jazz festivals, parades and. Farmers markets, and it was always something going on.
Yeah.
When the when the weed money was, and it's, and I don't feel that we should start reversing.
Yeah.
Cause the momentum is really good. Momentum in this town is great.
Yeah.
And we need to keep that momentum going with definitely travel tourism festivals. And just to add it up with a hundred and fifty years of celebration would.
That's, yeah.
That would be the cream of the crop, like, welcome to the town. Celebrating a hundred and fifty years.
Well, and I shared this with Aaron, was I have an idea for a multicultural festival that you don't hear about. You know, because we were founded on diversity, we were founded by very different races here. And to do a food festival activities, you know, Native American influences in, you know, Polish, German, all the way across Italian, Spanish, all of that in one area. And I think that would be something that would also help with tourism. Because I don't think, I looked it up, I couldn't find one other than Epcot Center. You know, so it'd be something that would be unique to our area, celebrating our culture. All our unique uh, architecture downtown, none of it matches, which is great. You know, and that's one of our unique selling points, cause they're all different. You know, and they're all beautiful, but they're they're all.
Let's know, you know, what's, which is the, still has that that app.
Yeah.
To to where, okay, where, this town is on the map.
Yeah, let's make it a food destination.
Let's make it a destination, cause it's on the map regardless of what's going on. And we know that they're gonna celebrate our hundred and fifty years.
We could, you know, there are twenty-six languages, I think, that were spoken in Trinidad, and it was because of all the miners. We could have, you know, a welcome banner that's in every one of those, you know, the background.
Going down the highway. Okay, different language.
Worked in the core.
Bring it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Bring it up a little bit. So it's it sounds like, and I've I've heard this from you, um, that festivals, um, you'd like to see a revitalization of festivals in my ass. Including the Sesqu- would you say?
Sesquicentennial.
Thank you.
Sasquatch.
What's that?
Yeah.
Sesquicentennial.
Yeah, really.
So what you could do, as you could basically say something like that, and then you can set in the implementation plan, you can set, you know, okay, let's come up with some specific ideas for this first year. You know, what are our festivals, what's our celebration? You know, sometimes when there's a big anniversary like that, there's sometimes a commission or
Yeah.
a committee that is set up to plan that, uh, which you could do also.
What are you looking at?
Hey, you were looking at him. So I was just looking at you. Yeah, sorry, Mark.
More commissions.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, this this will be short-lived. I mean, I I don't know.
Right, right.
But but if you wanna plan a big event like that, you gotta have people commit to it, right? So, anyway, so you could write a a goal that said that, you know, the the vibrancy of Trinidad will be, you know, uh, I don't wanna say revived, but will be, you know, alive and however you'd say it.
Celebrated.
Celebrated, thank you. In in festivals and events, including the Sesqu- Sesquicentennial in twenty twenty-six. And then what you'd be doing is you'd say, okay, we're gonna go do this. And then in the implementation plan, you go, okay, let's get specific about this now.
So we have the allocation here and it felt, it kinda felt like that when they had the last party here in the September that the had the blowout and everybody dressed up and people brought out colorful bicycles and cars and whatnot and the town was was really on board with, let's celebrate this event. Like, when I first moved here, I thought it was, it was like, hey, you coming to the party? I'm like, what party? We're not talking about it.
Second biggest parade in the United States one time.
Right.
I didn't write out Sesquicentennial because I would need.
We wanna see how you spoke. I gotta go, you guys, I'm sorry.
Commission the letters and things.
Hey, absolutely.
Sesquicentennial.
Yeah, we need to have that that thing.
That's good.
That 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 beginning.
And you captured exactly what I was thinking, cause we just. I mean, twenty twenty-six ties in developing a robust platform of festivals and events. I think, what did we see in the comments? That there's a request for something happening every weekend.
Every month.
Every month.
First Friday of every month, right?
Yeah, first Friday, we have our art walk. Um, I think this year, we should start doing some movies in the park over the summer, for example. Those types of things, and start building.
Yeah, ramping up slowly, we just get up.
That's what I think. We could take twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and just beta testing, what's successful, what's not. And then define how we're gonna move forward holistically in twenty twenty-six.
So so everyone, um, this has been fantastic. Um, we haven't talked about housing and we're getting a lot of goals.
Yeah, let's.
Right? So really wanna encourage you to put something up here on housing and then full stop on Holy.
Okay, I agree.
Didn't we put?
That was on economic vitality.
Economic vitality.
Yeah, we did housing.
We did?
Yeah.
What do we do? Sorry.
No, it doesn't say anything about housing, but that's what we thought it was gonna go under.
Yeah, we did. We we had mentioned, well, now that we've stricken that first goal, maybe we should add housing under economic vitality.
Okay. You can do that. Let's write that. Okay? And full disclosure, everyone, uh, Steve and I have talked about housing.
We did.
Um, and I I pled that I don't really have a great sense of a deeper understanding of what you've done so far. And, um, so we talked about it ahead of time and I asked Steve if you could, you know, develop some ideas about what you would like to suggest to the council.
And I do have some, so.
Okay.
Um, so what, I think we're, I I don't wanna say we're good, cause it's too early to tell. But we've created a hundred and, up to a hundred and twenty units in our Housing Now program. There's still some funding that can go for for additional units. Um, based on things coming offline. We have Holy Trinity that will be uh, coming online. I think that's forty units or so, um, that will be created there. We have, um, a project that you guys have been involved in called the the MARQ, M-A-R-Q. And that is two-bedroom apartments that are gonna be developed, and that will have an affordability component. The Housing Authority, um, under the new director, they have Melissa, they're partnering with HUD. They haven't built a new structure since the sixties. And so their their build time is past its prime. They they wanna add inventory and revitalize some of the the structures they have. So I would say we're rocking it on the affordable side for now. I I would be hesitant to put more effort into affordable housing right now until we see some of these things come online and then do a a spot check. What I think we need to focus on is attracting developers who wanna develop more patio home types of things, single-family dwellings. Not everybody wants to live in a house from nineteen oh four that has maintenance issues. Some people want brand-new, you know, drywall and whatever. And so those types of things. So I think that ties in with the annexation, um, discussions. But then also incentivizing, um, housing developers to come in and uh, it's interesting, cause our lobbyist, Mike Beasley, uh, came down last year and we did a tour of town, the town. Like, most people who come to Trinidad, just very impressed with how we show and how we look. And he said, my God, Steve, you must be swimming in new housing permits. And I think we had six.
Nope.
Last year. So we're we're not building the new inventory that that there is certainly, you know, the affordability component. And I would dare say that we are miles ahead of any other town in Colorado.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, but where where I think we're missing is, let's say, a a family wants to move here and be part of of Trinidad. It's gonna be hard for them to find that single-family home that's gonna work for them. The inventory is just not great right now. So what I'd like to see our housing goal is, um, to some extent, I don't know how, know how we phrase this, assess and, um, you know, re- recheck our affordable housing programs. But, um, attract, attract new housing opportunities for for families.
When we did the housing, uh, needs study.
We have that, yeah.
It it pointed out that we were a very interesting town because we had a lot of affordable housing needs. But we also needed houses that were in the three and four hundred thousand dollar range.
Exactly.
That weren't available for people who would be interested in that.
So one thing you could do, right? And we we see housing goals in literally every place we go. Just just name a place we've been, housing is an issue, right, as we've talked about that. So one thing you could do is to say something along the line, I'm just gonna kind of pair it with what I'm hearing. Building on your successes in building in in affordable housing, um, efforts. Um, we will work with, um, you know, public-private partnerships, or however you wanna say that.
Yeah.
To prompt, um, uh, the the building of single-family
Yeah.
homes and townhomes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in the city. That and and some part of that could be a financial plan, another part of that could be annexation or land banking.
Yeah.
Uh, land banking is a term that we're hearing more now, where cities are, this is Prescott, right? So they've got land, but some of it's BLM or whatever. And so they're they're trying to work with sort of their contiguous jurisdictions to to gain more land, cause their population wants to grow, but it can't grow unless they've got land. You can't develop housing unless you've got land to put it on.
That's true.
So you could say something like that, is that, uh, you could even put a date on it, right? You know, by twenty twenty, I'm gonna make it up, by twenty twenty-six, the 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 city will, uh, develop a relationship with, um, private sector developers, do land banking, financial planning, to begin the creation of of, you know, single-family homes in, uh.
I do, and I would add
Something like that.
Incentives into that too. So a good example would be, um, maybe we waive tap fees.
Yeah.
If a developer's coming in, you know, that just gives them that little extra little amount that that says, okay, well.
Margin, yeah.
Yeah. Instead of Canyon City, I'm gonna go to Trinidad, cause they're gonna waive my development fees.
The the other thing, I'll I'll tell you, the experience that I often retell, I was sitting beside, um, a developer, a builder, on a flight. I was going from Austin to Dallas or something like that. Yours and yours. And I was sitting beside this gentleman who builds a lot of houses. And I said, so where do you like to build?
Yeah.
And he said, well, I'm building in Dallas and Houston. I said, well, do you have a preference? And he said, yeah. And I forget whether it was Dallas or Houston. He said, one takes me six weeks to get a permit and one takes me six months.
Yeah.
Guess where I build?
Yeah.
Exactly.
And we are fast-tracking development applications, so I I think we are probably one of the quickest. But I don't know that we're telling that story very well.
All right.
No, but we did. We we completely overhauled our our land use code to make it more, um, easier.
So publicizing your performance on that is a really good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we process, you know, building permits, you know, within X number of days, ninety percent of the time.
Yeah.
Something like that. So is that where you wanna go? Do you wanna go, you know, building partnerships, financial plans, incentives, and land banking to, uh, encourage the the building of single family homes?
I do.
Do we also throw senior housing in there?
Sure you could.
Yeah, that's, I would specifically say that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
And that's where I think diversification of housing, you know, should be part of this too. Is it single family homes? But I like the idea of patio homes. John Wade, our golf course consultant, thinks there is a tremendous opportunity for us to get some land and then encourage patio home development or along the south side of the golf course, for example.
Yeah, with that view.
With that view and, you know, what a what a great place for certain people to live.
Yeah. So one of the, the, some of the terminology we hear is a continuum of housing opportunities. Seems like the average, the AMI, average monthly income, that never goes up, but everything else does.
Yeah.
And so it's it's really, doesn't equate to something that's pragmatic for a lot of people. Uh, you know, if you have a one-bedroom apartment building that's twelve hundred dollars a month and and you're making six hundred dollars a month or seven hundred dollars a month with a family, it's not gonna compute.
Right, but that's why we have to get better jobs. We have to have better educational, we have a a better workforce because then businesses will pay you more money.
Yeah.
I think that the unrealistic perspective is that I can be a server and support my family or I can. I I'm like, where did you get that impression that you could live on minimum wage? Where did you get that impression?
Cuz they, cuz they dove down minimum wages. Nobody's like, here's the maximum wage.
I mean, you start at minimum wage and then you get education so that you can have a better job besides minimum wage. Why would you stop at minimum wage?
Cuz you're never gonna stop.
You get you get trapped. That that's one thing, you do get trapped in debt and then you can't get out.
Can't get out.
That's true.
What's the mean of of family, uh, income here?
Uh, I think we we said yesterday it was forty seven thousand, but.
I think that's high.
That's the median, yeah. The mean, I don't know. Let me see, cuz that would be the average. Um, and.
Okay.
It's an important factor because, um, I think, you know, it's funny because you mentioned, Marv, that we're, our cost of living housing-wise is relatively low compared to a lot of places in Colorado.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Maybe all.
Maybe all, but that 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 can't be misconstrued to mean that it's an affordable place for the people who live and work here.
Right.
Well, and and I noticed that the trend with the professionals that do come in, they're not building in the city, they're building in the county.
Yes.
Because they want you to build.
But that's gonna be changed because their property taxes, like Santa Fe Trail Ranches, were were deemed or rated agricultural. So for an eight hundred thousand dollar house out there, you're paying like less than a thousand dollars.
And taxes, you're right. Cuz I lived in Trinidad Lake Ranches. I sold my.
How much were your taxes?
What's that?
How much were your property taxes?
Not very much, for thirty-six acres. Not like it is gonna be.
Yes.
Probably.
But see what's happening now is because of the issues with wildfires.
Yeah.
The insurance rates in those areas.
And those areas only have, I guarantee it.
A customer come in, excuse me, this week, that had a seven hundred thousand dollar house and their house insurance was ten thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
So I see that's, um, changing.
That's probably with a propane roof too.
I didn't find the the mean yet, but I'll keep looking, but this is an interesting way to frame it. The median household income in Trinidad, Colorado in twenty twenty-two was forty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-nine, which was eighty-two point eight less than the median annual income across the entire state of Colorado.
So we're eighty-two percent less.
Eighty-two percent less.
Oh, eighty-two percent.
Yeah, we're way behind the state. Way behind the state in income and in education. Colorado is one of the highest well-educated states in the country and not here.
Trinidad's off, but.
But you know what? I historically.
Is it cuz of numbers or?
And Michael, my husband Michael mentioned, he and I talked about it. It's like sixty percent of the county is on some kind of assistance. And I think that draws down on.
Sure.
Our average median income.
I agree.
So if we're looking at building, are we looking at extending or annexing more land to build communities? Or are we gonna clean up what we have and utilize the neighborhoods that we have? So like a bulk of everything?
Did you, did you start talking about land banking, council members? That could be both hands.
Okay, cool.
If we, for example, like yesterday, we were talking about making places developable or developable for commercial. We could do the same for housing. So we could secure areas of land that are, we've zoned residential, um, extend the infrastructure there. So it's ready to go. If if there's a lift station needed, we could maybe apply for some grants, have that ready to go. Cougar Canyon's a great example of that. I full- fully believe a developer would've come and put houses there years ago if it wasn't for the.
The big lane.
Yeah.
So I have a question for you. So. If you find a good partner who's willing to build houses here.
And then.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you find a partner or partners who are interested in building three to four hundred thousand dollar homes, do you care who buys them? And the reason I ask that.
You're gonna say yes, no. Don't care about the end user.
Right, it might not be somebody from here.
Yeah.
It might be a plumber who decides to move here.
That's great.
Totally wow.
And electrician. Well, no, I'm saying, you know, a plumber or electrician does not wanna live if they have any kind of business or they don't wanna live in a a two-bedroom apartment.
Right.
They're doing better than that, right? So I'm just saying, you know, if you build that kind of affordable, that's affordable in in the market in Colorado, that's, you know, if you build a nice home for three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, that's extremely affordable relative to the rest of Colorado. You can't buy one of those in those, right? Not for that much money. Just forget it, right? But if you do that, you might be building homes for your next wave of professional people living here.
That's amazing.
So here's an interesting stat that ties into that. I was just curious, so I go, what percentage of Trinidad housing is owner occupied? And it says that in, this is twenty twenty-one, but homeownership rate was sixty-four percent.
That's high. That's good.
That is good, but I I see that number just going further down and further down.
Absolutely.
So it's an interesting question when Marv mentions that. I wonder to what extent new housing will be immediately bought up by people maybe who have never even come to Trinidad as a rental opportunity.
That could happen too.
It could.
Unless you did restrict them.
Yeah.
Is that bad though?
Not necessarily, but.
A thing that came out of a similar study, I think too, that was interesting, is that we have a very low mortgage rate in this city, meaning most of the houses, the, it's all paid off or it's something they inherited.
Wow.
And.
That's true.
That if, I guess that in some way affects us in terms of getting financing for things. I don't know.
It also speaks to a very stable community.
Mm-hmm.
Financially stable community.
I, it all, I, I think generally what happens in those situations is that the person who gets the house, um, can't afford any other option and they generally don't do improvements that would bring it up to.
Right.
But they have a house that's paid for, so they don't have to worry about that. They just gotta pay taxes, basically.
But if you if you build that continuum of housing, right, so you've done really well on affordable housing, really well, right? So what what did that do for you?
Yeah.
And what do you now want to do?
Yeah.
Right? And if it's building, you know, s- single-family homes or townhomes or whatever, you know, ranging from, you know, I have to say it this way, three or four hundred thousand dollars. So then you're, then you're talking about somebody needing a down payment of what, sixty thousand? Well, but 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 here's where I, here's one, here's, here's what I don't want to see you do, right? Remember how we said if you start with how much money you have, you won't go anywhere? If you start with what people's income is now, right now, you're not gonna go anywhere. You won't build this kind of housing because you know people who can't afford it. But there's a lot of things going on in the housing market. If you're a veteran, you don't need a down payment now. You could see veterans or retired veterans coming here and buying that house and living here. Cuz they don't need a down payment, but they might really wanna live in a beautiful community and own a home that's worth three or four hundred thousand dollars, right? So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of dynamic in the environment. And it gets down to what do you want your community to look like?
Yeah.
All right, so that's kind of the, that's kind of the question. What do you want housing in your town to look like?
Well, if I remember in the past, when you built those new developments, and those were what, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar homes at the time? They're behind the movie picture showhouse and and those areas, they were smashed up.
Like that?
Like that. And I think occupancy up there is cool. And same thing behind on Ashland, visit Ashland, that that area.
Trinidad Heights.
Trinidad Heights, beautiful area, and I think they're all pretty well full too. And people dove at that opportunity for those beautiful homes.
Demand is up here, supply is down here.
Yep.
So do you wanna close the gap?
Yeah.
Or see it closed?
Well, and I think it typically, veterans usually buy the newer builds because on a B, everything has to be to the S.
Absolutely.
So those are easier.
They love your homes.
Because if you buy something that's already been established, they gotta go through fix the roof, fix the foundation, fix the windows, fix all this before they can walk into.
They don't wanna buy a fixer-upper.
Uh-uh, that's true.
They do not.
And I think USDA is the same thing. They are very, very particular and the new builds are what they'd rather finance.
And they take.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So what do you want your community to look like?
That, that, that.
So Darcy, you've been listening. What what do you have over there, please?
Yeah.
Hey, man, this is a pocket.
I put by twenty twenty-six, but later I should just take that out. But building on successes, the city will develop relationships and incentivize, I heard that word, but I'm not sure you want that, with private partners to build housing stock of single-family residences in your housing and patio homes. But then might just change that to a continuum of housing opportunities.
How about expand, to expand the continuum of housing?
Yeah.
Expand it.
Uh, to build housing stock to expand.
And you could add in terms of success to define this, building on the the city's success in building affordable housing, right? So everybody knows what that has to mean.
And if the, and if the housing division is going through and actually gonna start, that really puts into the low-income and affordable on their end. And that really kinda helps us in a way to kinda balance that out. Or we can now start developing the communities that we need to bring in those professionals and that income level.
Right.
Into this area while also they're helping on that other end, so it's kind of a a balance.
Right. And retired veterans bring a lot of skill.
Yes.
They bring a lot of asset, resources, energy into a community. Look at Colorado Springs, right? They build businesses, they do all kinds of things. Just as an example. So, Darcy, would you mind reading it again, please?
Sure. By twenty twenty-six, building on success, uh, building on the success of building, we need to revise this, of building affordable housing, the city will develop relationship, relationships and incentivize private partners to build housing stock to expand the continuum of housing opportunities.
Does that sound good, Steve?
Yeah, it sounds really good, man.
Sounds good.
A lot.
Okay.
And I do like it, having it under economic vitality.
Question for you, Steve.
Yeah.
So the the first of our affordable housing projects just got completed.
Yeah.
The timber view?
Yep.
It's about a block away from our island.
Yeah.
There is no occupancy in that. Have have you heard?
Yeah, they're charging too much. This thing is the problem. So it, not all of it is, um.
No, there's only ten units.
Yeah.
But there is nobody in this.
Yeah, we, our our theory is they want fourteen hundred dollars a month for a single bedroom apartment. That just seems like an awful lot.
They didn't do their homework.
And they wanna build another project, which we're kind of like, really?
Sounds like it needs different this part.
Yeah, that's what I think here. So we may, we may wanna put the kibosh on them moving or till they can get the occupancy up there.
That's scary. It's wouldn't never run with them.
That is scary, that's concerning.
It it is. And even East Street School, which is another housing project we did, came online when I first started here. It's not fully occupied either, so. So I I think we wanna be clear on the demand for housing as well. So that's something we need to definitely, we're top of mind as we explore these opportunities.
And you do have a housing needs assessment?
We do.
So you're saying twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, one of the things that I think is super important is.
Everybody, one conversation.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I was just gonna say, one of the things I think is very important when we, when we talk about housing, um, we have, you know, we have our needs assessment and everything is, um, we have to keep in mind that developers typically know the community better than we do.
Uh-huh.
Um, and they're looking, in every case, even on affordable housing, it's about making profit.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so, you know, they, I don't know, I I think it'd be interesting maybe to talk to some of the people who've completed projects and see what they're seeing and ask them, why, why do you think it's not working?
Why, why, why aren't they occupied?
What are you hearing and get some feedback from them directly?
I've learned that.
We might, we might even have to reassess the.
Yeah.
Affordable housing.
It's not about the end user.
Right?
In construction, it's not about the end user, it's about the development itself.
Right, I believe it, yeah.
So, and even if it's about the end user, you can't predict that. If it, if it takes a year to, or two years to build, build a development, you can't stick on what the future's gonna hold. You're like, you're gonna lock this in.
Yeah.
This amount and then deal. But that, that'd be way to, okay, now the end users.
Some developers won't even build the house till there's an owner, for example.
Right, yeah, that's true. Well, for my shop, what I've gotten, especially on that project that we have, it is, it's just too high. That's too expensive, it's just too, too expensive. And I think this.
That's the, you know.
At the, was it the school, the East Street? They started off up here. And now it's coming down to here, cuz they had to end up negotiating and getting filled because twenty-two to twenty-three hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Oh.
And those are hardest quarters. There's.
You're talking about the.
Starving.
It's like a.
Those are the locks, aren't they?
So they had to end up coming down so people could start moving in.
I struggle with affordable housing. It's needed very much, but it, the, the, the culture and the demand of affordable housing has changed so much when I was.
Right.
Um, starting out. And I'll share the story of one of my employees in my small business. Um, she had been living in a de-restricted affordable house in Dusty. And she was sharing it with her boyfriend and they split and it wasn't a safe situation for her. So she was the leasing, lost that affordable housing, she needed to move out. And she got into a new affordable housing apartment, was able to get on the lease herself. And worked for a bank for a while, took a job with me and I'm a seasonal employee. She knew that, that I was paid better than the bank at an hourly rate and she liked to outdoor her stuff. They reassessed all of the units. And they told her that she no longer made enough money to afford the apartment and raised the rent by five hundred dollars.
The term affordable housing is not a real.
Well, I struggled with this. So in order to keep that housing, she has a new boyfriend and put him on the lease. And when we talk about domestic and independence for anybody, not just women, but when we have these partners who are building the affordable housing and they're controlling the rents and how you qualify by showing your income and then saying you qualify or you don't, that's a different landscape. And as as a young person, a newly married person, I never had to, I had to pay the rent. But I was never qualified based on.
It wasn't affordable.
Or told I was making too much or too little. If I could pay it, I'd pay it. If I couldn't, I couldn't.
You didn't have a rich boyfriend?
And and I just, I worry and I don't really understand this mentality outside my expertise. But we are choosing your partners.
Yeah.
Think of that story. And like you were saying, how is the end user really being? Are you building for the end user or are you building for?
The second.
Yeah.
Well, if we're talking to a timber view, we we do, we, there are some of the units, ten of the units that are deed restricted.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten of them.
To be some, something around the AMI.
That usually is the primary strategy.
So I'm not really worried about the ones that are not the ten. I'm worried about those, that they're, they're gonna find people for those. But the rest of them, they took the risk on in terms of, you know, what they were building, whether or not there'd be a market for it.
No, I agree. But what I'm saying. No, I, but what I'm saying is, did we, did we over, um, fund affordable housing units?
Yeah.
Maybe we need to re-stop, reassess that
Yeah.
and see if that money should go in another direction.
And some of the, there has been some attrition. And so I think if it ultimately works out that the developer says, I can't do this anymore, it's not gonna pencil out, then they'll leave that program, they'll, you know, sell it or whatever they're gonna do. Then we can reassess that and, and reallocate the money.
Cuz it's already been built, right?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we should stop.
No, I don't think we should stop. We need to reassess.
Reassess.
And maybe redirect that, those
Just take a break for a while.
Just tweak it a little, tweak, tweak it.
Yeah, take a break on the affordable for a while and kind of see what we can do up the other end.
Let that sift out.
Don't call it affordable.
Check to see, stop and assess if it's, if it's productive or not.
Yes.
Well, we also have to start thinking about contributing to the, the property taxes too, cuz on an apartment complex, do we get the same amount of taxes as we do on fifteen houses?
Exactly.
You know, so we need to look at profitability and what's gonna help us in the long run.
All right. Well, good. That was a lot.
It was good, though, yeah.
It was really good. So let's take a break for lunch, half hour.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll come back and talk about eliminated, ever, adults
Sounds good.
in, in big government.